Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Monroe.
Here.
Mr. Shoep.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
And a motion to excuse Vice Mayor Messer.
So move.
Thank you, sir. Second. Thank you, all those in favor. All right. Please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you as your creation. You are the Creator, and you love us, and we understand that. Help us to follow your lead and love each other. Lord, we pray just now that you would give us wisdom and a sense of leadership in our community. We ask that you would bring healing not only in our community but throughout our nation, Father, by your love and by your grace, by your word. We ask, Father, that you would protect all those who serve in our community and in our country. We thank you for them, for their willingness to give. We ask that you would bless them and keep them and protect them. So, Father, we come to you in humility, seeking your guidance, seeking your will, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. And if counsel would first take a look at consideration of work session meeting minutes, June 15th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So move.
Thank you. It's our second. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Shoep.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
And in consideration of regular meeting minutes, June 23rd, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So move.
Thank you.
I have a question on that one. Page two, the bottom two, roll call vote was approved 6-0, and then the next paragraph where Mrs. Monroe voted no. Is there a reason why those are 6-0 with us voting no, or should that be changed to 6 to 1?
Yeah, I would change.
Is it the bottom of page?
Bottom of page two on the minutes from June 23rd.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I shared minor typos on page two as well.
Yes, I've got that corrected. Okay.
So, a motion is those changes.
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. In a second. Any more changes? Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Shoep.
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna go to certificate of achievement first, and then I'll go back to recognition of visitors. So, we have a very special guest this evening, Ty DeValle, one of our Lebanon grads. And it's with great honor that we bring you here to recognize you for your really outstanding achievement and the beginning of an incredible career. I know we had an opportunity, as I always say this, he's a former student of mine, proud to say that, and had an opportunity through the schools to recognize you. And Councilor Schaefer, I thought it would also be a wonderful idea to bring you here as well, to recognize you by our city. So, Councilor Schaefer, I'm gonna read this, and then I will give you the honor to present the certificate. So, Ty, if you'd just come right up here. So, certificate of achievement is presented to Ty DeValle, in recognition of being signed in free agency as catcher with the professional baseball team, the Seattle Mariners. Lebanon is proud of your commitment and dedication, and wishes you much success in your professional baseball career. Congratulations on your achievement. Very proud of you. Hey, Ty, would you like to say anything? Or I guess I'm putting you, definitely putting you on the spot. You are a graduate. What year did you graduate?
I graduated 2016.
2016.
Mm-hmm.
So, where do you head next? How long are you in town? And what's the plan?
So, I really don't know. I just got back from Arizona. Don't worry, I was really safe down there. But so, I just took care of all the physicals and things like that. I'm gonna officially sign my contract tomorrow. And then, from there, I guess I'm just hanging out, hanging out in Lebanon for a while until I hear the next move, because my league baseball has got canceled. So, still just waiting to hear. But thank you so much for this and having me and everything. So, thank you.
We're proud of all the different kids our grads do, and they do a lot of things. So, what is that?
Yeah, what's the ring?
What is that ring?
This is the national championship ring. I forgot to wear it when we did the ceremony in November, but I just wanted to bring it so it gets anyone who wanted to see it.
Would you mind giving me a try? Just kind of shake hands over everybody up here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. That's some bling. That's some bling to be proud of.
You know, the last Seattle Mariner?
It is better than I remember.
Go ahead. You want to say something?
Yeah. The last great Seattle Mariner that came home to Cincinnati was Ken Griffey Jr. No pressure there.
He didn't mount anything. You got this.
Again, thank you very much.
I think we had another catcher, a World Series-winning catcher, Joe Oliver, that started off in Cincinnati, or was at Cincinnati, and then went off to Seattle. But it's awesome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're gonna have a blast.
Take care. Be safe.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and go back to recognition of visitors. We have a number of folks that are here this meeting, just to kind of go over kind of procedure. What I'll do is call everyone up. If you would come to the microphone, state your name and address, just for the record. You have three minutes to speak, and when those three minutes up, Mr. Brewer will give me the hands up, and I'll ask you then to make your final comment. Appreciate everybody being here, and we'll get started. So, Kristina Johnson? Welcome.
Thank you, Christina.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have bad handwriting. I live at 21 Summit Street for the last nine years. And I'm here today to speak with you in response to the last few council meetings that have been on record. And at those two meetings, members of our community shared their experiences and their concerns, living as people of color here in our town. And I'm here today to voice my support for their requests, to implore you to take action on their requests, and to offer some potential additional steps we could take as a community. As I listened to statements from Mr. Wawada and Ms. Kimberlin, who I personally do not know well, I noticed a theme that struck me as especially troublesome, and it was that each of them were warned, before deciding to move to Lebanon, that our city is not a welcoming place for people of color by other residents of the city of Lebanon. Doesn't that strike you as a damning reality? Our community, our city, our citizens are known to be unwelcoming to black and brown people. I've even found myself having this conversation with people a few years ago, when a colleague was considering relocating to Lebanon, whose family is Asian-American. I listened to their statements, and then I remembered, oh, my gosh, I have made the same warning to people, and said, you know, there's not a lot of diversity in Lebanon. Just wanted you to know before you thought about moving here. And then a comment from another friend, a middle-aged white woman, who recently moved to town, and said to me, surprised, there's a noticeable lack of racial diversity here, someone who recently moved. And I wanted to tell you these stories to help you see that our community's current posture towards racial diversity is not just a story or a problem for people of color. It is a story for all of us, and we all have to accept the fact that our city, for any multitude of reasons, some of those spelled out very clearly by Ms. Kimberlin in previous meetings, is known to be a place where people of color will experience microaggressions, will view the remnants of historic racist laws, and experience the cultural residue of Klan ideology. To Ms. Kimberlin and Mr. Wawada, I want to say I am sorry that you, my neighbors, have had these experiences. When I dream of what Lebanon could be, it's a place where people of different races can work together for the good of our whole city, where we celebrate and champion our different cultures, and where we listen with empathy and compassion. When I dream of what Lebanon could be, it is a city where we collectively resolve to deploy all of our powers, our powers of speech, of economy, of government, of community engagement, to promote the flourishing of our neighbors over ourselves. Councilmen and women, as I have listened to the past two meetings and also scoured the Internet to find any personal statements you may have made surrounding issues of racism, diversity, or justice, I invite you to consider that one of the powers available to you uniquely
If you could make your final comment.
Thank you. extends beyond your personal action, but to your actions as elected officials of the city. And so, I wanted to draw out just three areas within your strategic plan.
Make your final comment for me, please. Thank you.
It's important that a commission or a committee be part of our city government and be commissioned by this body to increase our cultural competency, our welcoming, and our posture on diversity, all issues of diversity and equal opportunity, as this officially-sponsored commission of this body, and not abdicate that responsibility to other organizations, but instead work in partnership with existing organizations, with the faith community, and with all the citizens to
Thank you. Very much.
promote mutual flourishing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Amy McMurray. I'm gonna just say Amy McMurray, if you don't mind, because I know you've... Thank you.
You don't want to give that last name a try?
Well, I'm not even gonna try it. I apologize.
My last name is Olamaje.
Thank you.
And I lived at 26 West Orchard Avenue for over 14 years, but now I am actually a resident of Westchester. I live at 8899 Edrich Drive. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me.
You'll be fine.
I am a fifth generation, born and raised in Lebanon. My family have all been business owners, not all, but the majority. And I loved Lebanon growing up. Sorry, I'm pretty passionate about it. I didn't realize the racial issues that were happening when I was younger, and I'm a little embarrassed to admit that. But as this woman that just spoke said, when I left Lebanon and lived in other places, it became very apparent to me, because any person of color that I met outside of this town, when they asked where I was from, would go, when I said Lebanon, they would say, oh, my gosh, we know all about Lebanon. We don't go there. We don't visit there. We're not welcome there. And it wasn't, it didn't just happen once. It happened over and over in different cities, different people that did not know each other. And I just became really aware of what was happening. And then I met my husband, who is Nigerian, in 2007. He had been in this country for five years. And even when I told him I was from Lebanon, that was his reaction. And I thought, how does he know this? Like, how, this is what our community looks like from the outside. It is well-known, and it makes me sad. And I had always dreamed of living here and raising my family, my children here. And the deciding factor in not moving here was the racial, the racial issues that go on here. I didn't want my husband to feel uncomfortable all the time. I've experienced what happens here when I'm with him and with my family at restaurants, at grocery stores. We pretty much now just come here and visit my mom and my sister, and we leave. I'm glad to see that this is finally a topic of discussion, and I implore you all to just be open-minded. This really is happening here, and it saddens me to see that this is how we are viewed from people outside of here. You might not even realize that. I didn't. I made it to 18 years and didn't even know that that was how people viewed this town, and I stupidly didn't see it myself. And I wish I had seen it earlier so that I could have done more. So, I ask people in leadership to please listen. Please do something. Please, anything that you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Marilyn McMurray.
Hi, I'm Marilyn McMurray. I live at 381 Overlook Trail. It's hard for me to remember that. I lived on Orchard Avenue for 26 years. I grew up in Lebanon. I've been on several boards of several organizations here in town, and I've owned two businesses here in town. And I'm kind of sorry to say, growing up, I did not realize the undertones of racial things that went on in town, because I didn't see it. It didn't happen to me. And I was a little disturbed here that there are people on council who kind of don't think there's any problem, because they haven't seen it. Well, Amy brought Mesa into our lives, and he is from Nigeria, and now I have biracial grandchildren, and have experienced in this town, in a restaurant, not from the restaurant owner, but from just people who thought they could make snide remarks about my grandchildren, at which point Amy said, let's leave. And I said, just sit down. Mama Bear will take care of this if it keeps on. So, I think people, if you're never in a position where you know people or people from any place other than here, you don't have the understanding of how it happens, because it doesn't happen to you. So, I don't see any harm in making some sort of a resolution that we are not going to accept poor treatment for anybody in Lebanon, no matter what shade their skin is, because I think a lot of that would happen if people just knew that Lebanon is not gonna put up with that. I think we can be a better town, and I think it's high time that it needs to happen. So, I would implore you also to take some sort of action about this. It's past due. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Ben.
So, under normal circumstances, I would come here and speak to my personal feelings about each and every one of you sitting up there. But I've lost hope in all of city council, minus the individuals who have reached out to me via phone. So, instead, I'm going to read to you the words of Georgiana Sims. For those of you who don't know who that is, let me just give you a brief history lesson of who she is and what she represents. She was a lifelong, and is a lifelong Lebanon resident. She attended Lebanon schools and graduated and attended Xavier University, and came back to Lebanon and recently retired as the first black female sergeant from the Warren County Sheriff's Department. I have copies for each of you to read this for yourselves, but I will read it for everyone in attendance. To the members of city council, please accept this request to incorporate a resolution denouncing racism in the city of Lebanon, Ohio. I feel this message, which would implement good faith for all citizens. I realize that Lebanon is a small community, but it is constantly growing with a diverse amount of races, so a resolution denouncing racism and equality for all citizens in Lebanon is needed. I'm aware of at least one incident of a minority citizen whose civil rights were violated, and an apology was made by members of city council. This cannot keep happening. Lebanon has a history of systematic racism in past histories. Why not rise to the occasion and make Lebanon better than that? We are in 2020 with no resolution on the books to denounce racism. Don't live in the past and refuse to acknowledge and prevent racism in the future. This would be a good faith procedure to move forward and show how Lebanon does have humanity and empathy for all citizens. Honestly, this is a no-brainer. We experienced racism in our schools, and finally, the federal government intervened and concluded racism was demonstrated throughout Lebanon schools. The schools were financially hit and had developed programs to prevent this vile behavior and practices. Now it is time for the city to get on board and prove that we do not accept any practices of racism. Not a hard task. Just wake up and do the right thing. Signed, Georgiana Sims, lifelong resident, Lebanon High School grad, retired sergeant, Warren County Sheriff's Office. And aside from that, on a personal note, to say that I've lost faith is beyond repair. Proven fact is yesterday I spoke to a real estate agent to move my whole family, because I'm disgusted. You can't accept my biracial child to live here and attend these schools, when you guys can't even get together and get a resolution that makes any kind of logical sense. I was told that pick up the phone and make a phone call, or the phone works two ways. At no point, minus three members of this city council, Councilperson Wyatt, Councilperson Monroe, and Vice Mayor Messer, has anyone bothered to call me and ask me what's going on. I don't call you because I've lost faith in you.
Make your final comment for me. Thank you.
If you do not continue to do something, you will live in a white-only town. And if that's what you want, then I understand. And we aren't welcome here. It's up to you to decide what is and is not okay here. Do something.
Thank you. Ray Kimberlin.
Good evening. I want to thank all of those on city council and city manager for taking the incident that happened to my son very seriously. I appreciate the time that you have taken to work on my requests. However, I remain disappointed in the lack of leadership by the majority of the council to denounce racism. I truly do not understand. You're exercising your power and authority to dismiss my request by turning it into an All Lives Matter resolution. This is not acceptable. So, what I'll do is I'll remind you why I came here in the first place. These are the words for my son. He came downtown to take pictures. He happened to see some other people down here protesting. He wasn't protesting. He just saw them. He decided he was going to take pictures, like he does downtown all the time. He happens to have an all-black mask that he painted on it, and it says BLM for Black Lives Matter. So, while taking pictures, he says, I stopped in front of Town Hall, and an older guy on a motorcycle stopped and told him he didn't belong here. He responded, saying that I do. The guy on the motorcycle asked where he lived, and he said he didn't need to tell him that. He then proceeded, telling him to take off the mask, and my son said no. The man parked his motorcycle and watched him and followed him. And then, he says, I didn't want to leave the public eye, just in case he actually followed me and something happened. That was the fear that was being instilled in my son that day, and the first time he ever experienced racism. And then, he was asked by a group of people for, to come over and talk to them, and he didn't want to create a scene. And he says that he went back over to talk to them. This group then talked about how he was wearing the mask, and it was wrong. He peacefully disagreed with them. And after basically getting harassed by them, after a while, they left. And then, one stayed back to tell him, if my Klan or gang came to Lebanon and messed with his side of the street, that he would personally shove my camera up my ass. He then left, and after that, a man came up, and the story goes on and tells about the good citizens of Lebanon. I'm asking you all to be good citizens of Lebanon. There's more than one side to a story. My son's story was, he was one individual by himself, surrounded by four white adults. It was an inappropriate situation. They harassed him. They intimidated him. That is the story. That did happen. That was a fact. They had no way in right to insinuate their opinions on him and approach him in that manner. So, this incident didn't happen to everyone. Being told you do not belong or go back to Africa, microaggressions, driving while black, being called a nigger, doesn't happen to all people, only black people.
If you could make your final comments.
If you're concerned about all lives, then show respect and empathy to the black citizens right now and condemn racism. But better yet, you want to do something for everyone, all citizens, establish the Human Rights Commission to educate, create, facilitate, and promote programs, projects, feedback, and action to eliminate discrimination in any form of any kind for all human relationships. Many cities have them. So, I don't think it's too much to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Olivia Forster.
Hi, my name's Olivia. I live at 120 Canal Street here in Lebanon. I want to start out with, I was able to listen to the audio from last week's work session. I wasn't able to attend, but I did listen to it. I think what I'm gonna start out with here is, what I was bothered was the discussion about whether or not this issue of racism should be national or local. I was very disturbed to hear that a lot of you didn't want to recognize that racism is a local issue. You wanted to put national in there, which I understand, but by putting national in there, you still didn't say, yes, it's happening locally. It is a local issue. I never once heard that. So, I can just say that I was very disturbed by the argument of that. And I just want to know, why is it so hard for you to say that racism happens in Lebanon, Ohio? Why is it so hard to say those words? It's as other people have said, other cities say it all the time. Why is it so hard? I also want to tell a story, because someone said, and that's been spoken about, that they didn't see it, didn't happen. My husband and I have lived in this town. He was born and raised here. He's lived here all his life. I moved here. I married him. We had a child. And before we had a child, we lived on Warren Street, and we had some people in our apartment. And let me tell you, what we endured was absolutely ridiculous. I was called a gorilla lover, jungle boy lover. My husband was called names I don't even want to say. We called the police many times. And yes, the police were great. They were fantastic. But as was said at last week's work session, there's nothing within the city that you guys can do about that. There's nothing, if we would have called, yes, within the city, if there's something as if hiring practices that you guys see that is discriminatory, yes, you can do something about that. So, my husband and I, because there could be an ordinance, right, within the city, that the city of Lebanon will not put up with this. But my husband and I had to endure that, in a home where we paid city taxes. We paid rent. We kept that apartment nice. And we had to endure that. And you're still not willing to stand up and say that we are willing to say enough is enough, and nobody else should have to endure this. Another thing that I would like to speak upon, which I listened to in the work session, was the appointee of a member to the MLK Coalition. And I want to make sure that you all know that I don't represent the MLK Coalition. This is my opinion, and this is my opinion only. And yes, I do work with MLK Coalition. I'm deeply saddened that you felt that it was okay for you to appoint someone from city council onto a community organization, instead of making a diversity council, a human rights council, or something else of the matter, which was requested.
I was gonna make your final comment.
I want to say something to that. And I also listened, the last time on the work session, it was said that you guys don't have power, correct? That is what was said. Can someone speak up to who said that? Was that you, Mr. Shoep?
I said that, I didn't say we didn't have power. The way it was worded, it made it sound like people of, you know.
Yeah, but you did say that we sitting here have just as much power as you have. No, I'm asking no question.
What I'm saying is that during this time, it's not to debate with us. We're really just listening to what you have, listening to what you have to say.
And if you can listen to me, what I'm saying, it does last a little longer than three minutes. And I'm sorry, because racism isn't something that you can put a timeline on.
Okay. If I could just stop you for one second? Absolutely not. You're right. Absolutely not, no, you're right. But in terms of the rules of council, that was the, that's the guidelines.
You're limiting me on what I can say.
Yes, during this particular time of recognition of visitors, yes.
But he, he said that we have just as much power as you, correct? That, that's what was said. And I have just as much power as a member of this community to tell you, what, what else can I tell you what I think? What else can we come here to tell you what we think, to schedule a one-on-one meeting with, one-on-one meeting with you? What, ma'am, please tell me when I could schedule one-on-one meeting with you.
I would love to be able to sit down and talk with you.
I want to be able to speak with you and everyone else on the record and with the community. To limit me to three minutes, that is my duty as an American and my freedom to speak to you and to tell you what I feel right now. And if you go ahead, if you would like to limit me to three minutes to speaking my viewpoint on racism, if you want to stop me from saying what I have...
Okay, ma'am, I'm, I'm gonna...
Go ahead.
I'm gonna have, no.
You want to stop me?
Look, no.
Stop me.
Look, ma'am, I understand you're upset, okay? I understand this has personal significance to you, and I'm, I'm sorry about that, okay? But you personally are not being limited to three minutes. Everyone, okay, everyone who speaks during this part of council is, is, is limited to three minutes, you're not being singled out, and nobody said that we could solve racism in three minutes, okay, it's just...
No more, thank you, I'll take that as a, thank you.
Gail Rash.
I'm Gail Rash, I live at 5317 O'Neill Road in Waynesville, and I am reading the following on behalf of the Board of the MLK Community Coalition of Lebanon. This is addressed to the Lebanon City Council and Mayor Brewer, thank you, and it's regarding racial justice. We are writing on this Independence Day to call for unified efforts toward eliminating racism and racial discrimination. On July 4, 1775, white men in colonial America proclaimed independence from Great Britain. Today, we face the deeply painful reality that Independence Day for white men occurred during a time of genocide and enslavement for men, women, and children of color. As a result, we continue to face a convoluted web of deeply rooted racist policies. Individual, institutional, environmental, and spatial racism are an evidence in situations like the ones we have witnessed over the recent weeks and months globally, nationally, and locally. Black and brown people in our community continue to experience racially biased treatment within all the institutions of our community, causing trauma and creating hostile environments. The Martin Luther King Jr. Community Coalition of Lebanon, Ohio continues to be a resource to the Lebanon City Council. The mission of the coalition is to honor Dr. King's vision of justice by building an inclusive network of individuals and organizations that work toward empowerment for all people. At our annual Martin Luther King Jr. Day events in January, we established a theme for this year, 2020 Focus on What Matters. We are focused on community efforts to eradicate racism in all its forms across all our institutions because liberty and justice for all truly matters. We are committed to collaborative leadership that includes diverse voices in policy decisions to eradicate ras- racism throughout our community. We realize that it is necessary for each community leader to engage in ongoing learning and development as we work toward equity and justice. Therefore, we submit the following recommendations for action by the Lebanon City Council. Resolve to engage in ongoing anti-racist work by all city officials and employees and post this resolution on the city website. This is a public commitment to a process of discovery and making changes to address inequities and work toward making life better for the people of Lebanon who have suffered due to racism. Work with MLK Lebanon to engage organizations that have the capacity and expertise to provide ongoing anti-racist training for all city officials and employees. Commit to participating in anti-racist events and actions implemented by MLK Lebanon.
Just make your final comments, thank you.
Systematically examine city policies for sources of bias in order to implement policies that create equity across all departments and functions of city government.
Thank you very much. Um, Renee Forster.
Renee Forster, I live at 405 Cedar Lane in Lebanon, and thank you all for letting me speak this tonight. I first want to say something that a friend of ours stated in a community dialogue. We need to start listening to understand, not listening to respond. Nothing is said, you should take personal, nothing that we say, you should take personal, except for wanting to do better. Um, I've lived in this town all my life, I'm 62 years old, and I've faced a lot of racism. I grew up in the, the black area, and it was like, the parents protected us from racism. The first time that I experienced anything of being different was when I went to kindergarten, and that was a scary thing, because I was the only black child in that room, and I saw kids and adults that I had never seen before. And as growing up, and I had a pretty good time in high school, but trying to get a job here was difficult. When I did get a job, other people made more money than I did, even though I would train them. That was a form of racism. Trying to get a home and being told I couldn't, that was a form of racism. Microaggression happens, just happened to me this week, going across the street from Oswald's Funeral Home. I'm in the middle of the street, and a man pulls out from a parking space, and he revs his engine at me. And someone that was standing near me told me to hurry and get across the street, and I said, "Well, he sees me." And he said, "I know he sees you." I was at the working session, and I saw differences in the way people were treated that spoke up that night, and it really hurt my heart. Because everybody should be handled with respect, you all should be handled with respect, and the people, the citizens that come before you, handled with respect, and just listen to. And that's, that's the main thing I want to say is, please just listen to people, because it is real, just because it may not happen to you, or happen to people that you know or you hang around with, it is happening, and we need you to care about it. I really need you to care and to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Hawley.
Hello, my name's Brian Hawley, 789 Lake Forest Drive. Um, I've lived in Lebanon pretty much my entire life, 37 years old. I worked for the city, my dad worked for the city for 30 years, my brother-in-law worked for the city, my sister's a teacher, and so we've been around here. They didn't let us in the electric department, that's why you guys still have your utilities. But, so, I went from a community just like Lebanon, I was working in Kettering, which is basically the same makeup. I went directly from there to coach wrestling at Princeton High School. That was my first opportunity I ever really saw to get out of Lebanon and be around primarily black people, the black kids that I was coaching. And they asked me the same question, I'd rather you brought it up, about, uh, oh, you're from Lebanon, isn't that where they hate black people? Or something to that effect. And it wasn't just once it was asked, it was asked numerous times, and I, and I do the same thing, most people say, "Oh, oh, that was back in the 60s," or, you know, "that was back before I was alive," or whatever, is our normal answer. But I don't want my niece to be asked that in 10, 15 years. So however we can reach that point to where their families, my family, your guys' family, aren't dealing with this in 10 or 15 years, no, I agree, I know we'll still be dealing with it, but how can we progress? How can we get better? And I've heard people talk about a committee and bring up the MLK, and honestly, I've been here forever, I never heard of the MLK until last week. If that's the organization that we want to go with, perhaps bring them in here, let them speak, and we can form a group together and bring everybody in, so we don't have numerous groups all over, and can get the best results out of everything. And I agree with not appointing somebody to whatever board. When you appoint somebody, it's kind of like you're giving them detention, or, you know, "Well, why'd you pick this person? Did nobody else volunteer?" So I, I do think that should be a voluntary spot if they want to show up, but I would like to have some type of committee along with here my time to help, however possible, and I thank you again.
Hey, thanks, Brian. Come on, go more, come on now.
Hi, thank you very much for letting me come up here and speak. I, um, wanted to just express my thoughts and concerns as, as a member of this community. I grew up here in Lebanon, um, since first grade, and then left for many years and came back, but, um, it's, I'm going to echo what some of the other people have said about the city's reputation. I wasn't as fully aware, I was aware of some of the things, but it was more clear to me when I had friends come back with me to Lebanon, um, had a couple different boyfriends come back and, and, and visit Lebanon, and they'd spend the weekend, and one of the things that they would always say was, "Amy Ko, I've been in this town for a couple days, and I haven't seen one black person, or one, any, or Asian, or any, anything else." And it kind of struck me, like, that's right, it really is not as diverse as a lot of areas. And I have also, um, since I've been back, have, have, uh, met many people who are from Cincinnati and Dayton, who will say the same things that these other, um, people have mentioned, that when I say I'm from Lebanon, the comments will, like, are always, um, the town, do I need to duck my head when I drive through the town? And these are African-Americans who, um, who have come to Lebanon for, um, for meetings. Another one recently, a young man in his 30s who has a student in Mason High School, I was talking to him, and I mentioned that I'm from Lebanon, and he said, "I would never go to Lebanon." He said, and he said, "Because of the racial, um, the way people are treated there." And I said, "Even today, you feel that?" He said, "Absolutely." He's from Cincinnati, he lives in Mason, but Lebanon has a reputation that it has not gotten rid of. And I'm asking, um, our city leaders, that we, we are missing out on some incredible, talented, beautiful people in this city. I have had the honor and privilege to get to know and hear the stories of many people that live in this community. And we have some of the poster boards of the stories that we've done for our community dialogues. The one I have here is of Ethel Sims, who's the mother of Georgetta Sims. She is the first African-American who was elected to in Warren County, and this was in the 70s. She's a, the, the, a woman who helped get the first African-American teacher in, in, in Lebanon, and this wasn't until the 70s. We still do not have a diverse makeup in our school system as well. Um, I just also want to say that, um, we're, a lot of them are telling me they're not going to come back to Lebanon. We are losing incredible talent if we don't help cultivate this. And I will just say real briefly, things are still happening today, my, I have, students have told me that Pleasant Square is still called Brown Town by, by students. My nephew, who likes to wear his hair in dreadlocks, and has a friend who's an African-American, recently they were out hanging out together, and, uh, a young boy who's in sixth grade used racial slurs, called them the N-word, and he knew that my nephew was part Asian, Japanese, and he also said ching chong, which was very demeaning. And where does this, where do these people learn this? And if we don't help show it better, I, I know, my mother was Japanese, growing up here, I saw the microaggressions all the time, I saw the comments towards our African-American community. I, I didn't know how to speak out then, but, but there are people, um, it happens, and I saw it, I see it, and I just ask all of, all of the council members to please sit down, maybe listen, and talk to someone who lives in this community, who has, has faced that, and maybe try and listen to hear what they've experienced. Appreciate you taking the time to let me listen.
Thank you. Was there anyone that did not fill out a sheet that would like to speak? Going to make sure there's anybody else.
I know, I know I've spoken, but it'd be nice to hear them say something.
Sure.
I will say I felt hurt because I feel like it's silence. I feel like me and my black husband, and my black family, and every other black person, not just in this community, they've been silenced. So yes, when I feel silenced, I do get upset, anybody does. And I'm not directing it just at you, I'm looking at you because you said that. But what I want to say, because I didn't get the chance to say it, is that thank you, Wendy, thank you, Krista, for standing up and saying what you said. And my question is just why? Why is it so hard to say that this is happening in Lebanon? That's my only question. Why is it so hard? Why is it so hard to make an ordinance? That's the only thing that's been asked.
And you know what, we're gonna, and you know what, I, I will say this, I appreciate, I do appreciate your emotion and your passion, absolutely. And we are, we have a resolution that we have written, like in our, in our, in our work session, for the, you said you, did you see it? Did you say you heard it?
No, I listened, I listened to the work session, I listened to everything that was said.
Okay, there was, there was a lot of going back, a lot of things going back and forth, and trying to kind of come up with some kind of, um...
And it was said that would be discussed in this type of meeting, right?
Right, and so, what we're gonna do, because we're not, we're not going to vote on it, and we're going to, I think what we're gonna do is, next week, we have a special meeting, um, to deal with another subject, so I think what we're gonna do in that meeting is vote on it then, but what I'd like to do, and I've asked the, for everybody, and you can get copies, we have, we just got copies, um, to ask the city attorney to read it and body so you can hear what we are looking at, because we are in fact going to act on that, I'm looking at you because we're...
Yeah, no, yeah.
To, um, act on that and vote on that, because we do feel it is absolutely an important issue for our community, and, and we are going to be, we are going to be voting on something, we are going to be voting on something, but it's been a lot of, it's been a lot of hashing out and kind of figuring out what to do, but again, I'm going to say to you, Olivia, I, I appreciate your, your passion, and I, I hope when I, when I set those, that three, three minutes or whatever, I'm, I'm just trying to kind of follow the rules, it's not about what, it's not about the content of what you're saying at all, I value that, what you say is important, what everybody has said has been, has been important, and it's trying to come up with something, so I'm going to ask you if you don't mind to go sit back down. So I'm going to ask you if you don't mind to go sit back down, please. And what I think we'll do is right now, just because of the timing, if the city attorney could just read that, we're not going to, we're not going to act on it, we're going to be able as a council to talk more about it at our work session, and then we'll have the opportunity to, have the opportunity to vote on it. So everybody here can come back to the work session or to the meeting, special meeting we have next week.
And just to clarify, because you said two different things, you said we'd vote on it next week, and then you said work session, but I'm hoping we will vote on it next week.
That's what I just said.
I think we should, I think we should move to it.
Oh, we're going to have a special meeting for the fire department?
Next week, yep.
So we're going to meet before Planning Commission at 6:00, but we'll give out those details.
I just, I did have a question, and it has something to do with this resolution and what was, and the only reason I'm asking now is because in that meeting it was said that there wasn't a discussion, that now would be the time, and someone even asked about community input, and it was said that this would be that time, correct?
Well, next week too, we let everybody speak tonight. Next week, before we vote on it, people will again have an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay, I was just, because I was wondering about your viewpoint on making this about everyone and not just racism, because that was one of the points that was made during that meeting, was that you said that it should be about everyone and all people and all prejudice and all of this, and all harassment, especially for the way the anti-racism and diversity. So I was just, so that people know exactly what your thoughts are and kind of what the city council is considering when they vote, I just thought that that might be something important for people to know.
Okay, we'll read this, let's, first, we'll first read this, okay? We'll go from there first, so.
Mayor, can I make two points of clarification before I get going? Okay, so the rule is three minutes. I was acknowledging you being upset, because you're obviously upset, and I'm honoring that or I'm recognizing that, I see you. I'm not trying to make you more upset, because it was basically what I was trying to say. The three-minute rule, whether it's a good rule or a bad rule, whatever, the idea is to make certain that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. There are three minutes for racial issues and 10 minutes for other issues, that's not the way it's done. It's just a three-minute rule, and that, the rule, whether you agree with them or not, is there to make certain that everybody gets an opportunity to speak.
So what could I add, because that's something that any city council would be willing to look at as, because as, like I said, three minutes isn't a very long time to discuss what you've been through when it comes to racism.
Well, no, I understand that, council can waive rules, they can vote to waive rules, I don't know if they're going to do that, there were a lot of people that spoke tonight. Again, the idea is to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak, and I wasn't trying to call you out or shame you or embarrass you about being upset.
I don't, I don't.
I was just acknowledging the fact that you were upset, and while it's unpleasant sometimes, it's sort of my job to help the council keep order as gross as that is and as, puts me in a position where I upset somebody, I don't, I don't mean to minimize it, or I'm just saying that. The other point of clarification was that in an earlier draft of the resolution that was discussed last week, there was a provision in there that essentially designated two council people, it didn't say more couldn't attend, but two council people would sort of be officially designated to attend meetings of the MLK Coalition. We don't have the power or authority to put people on an MLK Coalition board, it's not our board. So I think the idea from some council people, not all of them, was that if council people were sort of designated to engage with a community that has experience and was working on this and had some expertise in sort of an ongoing basis, that might be a good thing.
Absolutely.
That's not in the current draft, but I just wanted to make it clear.
But in place of a diversity council?
I don't know that it was in place of, it was just there, okay? Council can talk about...
Correct, yes.
Mr. Yer, can you read that? Can you read the resolution first?
I will, so, again, mayor, I just wanted to make those clarifications. The council wasn't appointing people to a committee that they don't, they were just, anyway. Okay, let me get my paperwork here, okay. Resolution denouncing all forms of racial prejudice and discrimination, whereas the city council of the city of Lebanon, Ohio believes that it should be self-evident that all people, regardless of race, have a right to be treated with respect, fairness, equality, and dignity. The council denounces all forms of racism, prejudice, and discrimination, whether individual, structural, or institutional, whenever and wherever it happens to occur. Whereas recent events have shown council that all communities, including Lebanon, must act in protecting all members of our community from the scourge of racial discrimination and disparate treatment, because racial prejudice is most hurtful when harbored or ignored by people in positions of leadership. We believe it is incumbent on those of us who hold some leadership in the community to speak out about this issue. Further, we must ensure that the value of each individual in our community is recognized, protected, and nurtured. The city of Lebanon holds all of its officials, employees, and partners to the highest standards regarding courteous and respectful treatment of all people and the protection of basic fundamental rights. Whereas, city council hopes and believes that this resolution will help to bring increased government and private sector attention to these issues so that all individuals in our community may feel safe, protected, and free to express their differences and uniqueness, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Lebanon, Ohio. Section 1, the city council of the city of Lebanon, Ohio hereby denounces all forms of racism, prejudice, and discrimination, whether individual, structural, or institutional, whenever and wherever it happens to occur. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect at the earliest period allowable by law.
So the process will be, we will, we will have a special meeting on Tuesday at 6:00. Be aware that it's, there's a change in six.
6:00 here.
6:00 on Tuesday, because there's a planning commission after that. And this legislation resolution will be on, there will be, this will be the, a time for city council to do more discussion. We received this, this resolution today, all of council received it today, to be able to take a look at it and view it, talk them, talk one-on-one with each other, and then more discussion, and then the community has an opportunity also at that time to come back and speak as well, okay?
And with that being the second reading of that, we will be able to pass it next time.
Well, it's a resolution, so we'll be able to pass it on Tuesday.
It'll pass immediate, whatever form will be passed Tuesday night.
So if council wants, as a resolution, it's able to be passed with one reading, the caveat there is, as a, it's a, what we call work sessions under the revised code are actually called special meetings.
Special, yeah.
And the sunshine laws say that you have to state the time, place, and purpose of every special meeting. So as long as we note on the agenda that legislative action may be taken on this resolution, it can be passed.
Yeah, please add that to the agenda and then notice.
We have to make a motion for that?
No.
Okay.
You can just direct, I mean, direct, we'll put it on the agenda.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to go ahead to regular items on the agenda under previous business. Number one, ordinance number 2020 dash 069.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 069 is an ordinance of the city of Lebanon, Ohio approving an amendment to the official zoning map thereof to six-plus acres of property located west of North Broadway, Lebanon, Ohio, 45036, parcel number 1206252031, from residential 1C or R-1C to public institutional or P-1.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will approve the zoning map amendment to rezone parcel number 12062520031, which is located at 601 North Broadway Avenue, from residential R1C to public institutional. This will support the construction of the new fire station.
Okay, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, and I think there was a second.
She beat me to it, I'll take the second.
Okay. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Moving on to new business, number one, resolution number 2020 dash 070.
Resolution number 2020 dash 070 is a resolution approving the lease agreement between the city of Lebanon and Lebanon Elks for an outdoor dining area, 29 East Mulberry Street.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will authorize a right-of-way lease agreement with the Lebanon Elks to support a bump out on East Mulberry Street in front of their building for an outdoor dining area.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Recuse.
Mr. Schaefer?
Oh, I needed to recuse myself as well, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you for the reminder.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
That's going to have to get a second reading, because...
They're doing it five of us.
So could...
Oh, no, it's a resolution, I'm sorry, my bad.
Great, thank you. Number three, ordinance number 2020 dash 072.
Sorry, mayor. Resolution number 2020 dash 071 is a resolution adopting the 2021 city of Lebanon pay plan.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will adopt a 2021 city pay plan for non-unionized staff. The pay plan calls for a 1% cost of living increase and a 1.5% performance-based increase.
All right, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right, number four, resolution number 2020 dash 073.
072.
70.
2, ordinance number 2020 dash 072, your honor.
72, we're on number three.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 072 is a supplemental appropriation ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $40,000 in the 410 Capital Reserve and Replacement Fund to address railroad bridge repairs. This fund is specifically set up to fund these types of repairs associated with the railroad. The city transfers a certain amount of money into this fund as a reserve every year to be able to fund, you know, any sort of significant repairs to one of our five rail bridges. So we did get into a situation where we had to make some repairs, pretty extensive repairs to one of the bridges this year.
Okay, thank you, so a motion to adopt.
Sure, so moved.
Second.
I'm not going to get them all.
Discussion or comment?
So they're not, they're not operating right now, is that correct?
No, they're not.
So it's good to kind of get these repairs knocked out before they're back up and running and have to...
Yeah, yeah, otherwise it would get shut down, so absolutely.
And these repairs, are they just natural, occurring use?
It's the bridge timber, so, you know, the, all of our rail bridges, well, all but one are wooden structures, so it's just, you know, these bridges get inspected regularly, and they were just identified on the inspection report as something that needed attention, so we took action.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Number four, resolution number 2020 dash 073.
Resolution number 2020 dash 073 is a resolution adopting the tax budget of the city of Lebanon, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and submitting same to the county auditor.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will adopt the 2021 tax budget submission to the auditor of Warren County.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Number five, ordinance number 2020 dash 074.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 074 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to extend the development and economic incentive agreement with North Broadway Apartments LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will authorize an extension to the project completion dates for the 511 North Broadway Avenue redevelopment project. The new dates that are outlined in the agreement are a contingency deadline of September 30th, with construction scheduled to start before January 1st. The developer had put this project on hold when the coronavirus hit in March, so this extension will allow him to kind of go back out on the market to get updated construction pricing with the intent of moving forward with construction later this year.
All right, thank you, a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Number six, ordinance number 2020 dash 075.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 075 is an ordinance placing a temporary moratorium not to exceed six months on the issuance of permits for storage unit and self-storage establishments in the city of Lebanon, Ohio.
Mr. Branca.
This legislation will place a temporary six-month moratorium on storage unit and self-storage establishments within the city, that's the construction of new establishments. This will give staff time to evaluate our zoning code in relation to the appearance, construction standards, size, economic impact, and other considerations associated with self-storage units.
And a motion for a first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll see this at our...
Next week.
Next week.
Yes.
Yeah, so number seven, resolution number 2020 dash 076.
Resolution number 2020 dash 076 is a resolution initiating a zoning map amendment consisting of 12.2802 acres located at 363 Southwest Street, parcel number 12051770110.
And, Mr. Branca.
This legislation will initiate a zoning map amendment process to rezone approximately 12 acres of property located at 363 West Street. The current zoning on this property is light industrial, and this will initiate a process to rezone the property with a land use that's more consistent with the city's comprehensive plan.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoup?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right, city managers, report.
Thank you, mayor. As was discussed, the next meeting of council is a special meeting, which will be Tuesday of next week, July 21st at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. I did want to ask what the council goals and objectives, is that something the council would like on that agenda as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put both of those items on there, okay. I do have some good, you know, the intent of the meeting or the goal of the meeting originally was for voting on the construction contract for the new fire station. We did open bids this afternoon, and the bids came in under budget, which is great. So city staff's right now evaluating the bids, we had multiple alternate bids that we were considering as well. We'll bring that as a package to council for a vote next week, but we were very pleased with the number of bidders we got and the bid prices, so we'll bring that to council next week. That's all I have, mayor.
All right, great, no executive session, correct?
That's correct, Your Honor.
All right, council members, councilwoman Ron Rowe.
I just want to say, I clarify something that I said last week, I said about the schools, and I said I would repeat my comments tonight, which I will do. I wanted to clarify that if and when racial incidents occur, and if and when an individual or group of individuals choose to exhibit their bad behavior, when and if and when it does happen at school, it does not mean it is the school's fault. I see racial incidents happening, and it's sad, and it's frustrating, and I'm so thankful, as painful it is as it is, I'm so thankful for those of you that came tonight to share your personal experiences, I think that's very valuable. And so, for those things that did happen at school, again, I just wanted to clarify that I was not saying that it is the school's that I was not saying that it is the school's fault. I probably should have referred to the community as a whole, because they are just an extension of the community, and it's the community that shares this problem. So it's more of a symptom of a larger community problem than it is otherwise, and I know that the schools have made huge and wonderful steps in this area, and they continue to, and they're very invested in working in this area of equity, and they have very concrete objectives that they work toward, which I think is great, because that's easy to measure, and it's easy to hold, hold yourself accountable, and so I, that's why I would like to see us kind of go along and do something similar to that. That's it for me tonight.
Thanks, Councilmember Matthews.
I'd like to thank our city manager and water treatment staff for providing a really nice tour. I'm one of the newer council members, and Councilmember Schaefer and I, we're giving a great tour of the, the facilities that we have to keep Lebanon healthy and growing, and they, it is good to see how good of hands we are in from our city manager and our supervisors there, so thank you very much for that, I wanted to appreciate that.
Yeah, I wanted to pass on, they thoroughly enjoyed having, having council members come down, they don't get visited very much at the waste water plant, so they're, they're appreciative of that, so, yeah.
Our, our children, the offer was made, and you said it's not taken up very often for field trips there, but our, our little children, I, I brought that as an option, and they will be taking you up on it once things open a little bit, and I wanted to echo Councilmember Monroe's, thank you so much for coming here and speaking, it is good to hear from the community, it's good to be engaged, the, the emotion, the experience is yours and should be here. I'm glad to see that we are moving faster than the, to the work session, which would be another two weeks, that we're bringing it to the emergency session, the special session next week, so that is good. And to bring the reason that it came from not getting voted on earlier was because the previous one with the language that seemed to be pushed back on of having someone from council be put on the Martin Luther King Board needed to be struck, because that was improper, shouldn't have been, in my opinion, should not have been there, that is up to a board to decide who's on their board, and as such, needed to come back to work, and so we needed to come back into that formation process, we wanted to talk about that, and to echo, we've stated racism, and this is a special urgency, there is equal dignity of everyone made in the image and likeness of God, and it requires effort, more than just words, it requires effort to reduce these excessive social inequities, and it gives a special urgency to the elimination of sinful inequalities that exist. So, thank you so much for giving that, that energy and the experience and all of that, that you are welcome here in Lebanon, and you are part of the story of Lebanon, and thank you for being here.
Councilmember Schoep?
Me? Okay.
But you.
First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone who came and spoke this evening. I see you, and I hear you, and thank you for being here in person and speaking. I would like to say to Ms. Forrester, I especially value what you shared this evening, because I've watched you, and you always treat people with thoughtfulness and respect, everything I've seen anyway. And that's important. We're city council, but we're people too, and when people, upon first meeting, you come in and the first thing they do is confront, is confrontational, it's human nature to bow your back a little bit, especially as a man, I think, to bow your back a little bit and put up a little resistance. And so that's a lesson for all of us. The three-minute allowance thing is just a procedural thing, I very rarely get to speak more than three minutes, but, but it is a procedural thing to allow people to, you know, a number of people to share, otherwise we'd be here forever. I want to also say that, and I still, please don't think it's a bad thing that people live in this city and don't realize and aren't aware of racial issues. What that means is, there's a lot of good people here, a lot of people that doesn't even cross their mind, it isn't because it, I mean, you know, I try to be aware of what's happening, not just to me, but to other people. And, so, what that means is, number one, I, I do have some good friends, you know, they're good people, but not everybody in this town that's a good person is my friend, so there's a lot of good people out there. And so, don't, don't take that as a bad thing, people aren't trying to live oblivious to it, there, it just doesn't cross everybody's path. So, I just want to reiterate, thank you, you have made me aware of things that I wasn't aware of, and, and I'm glad for that, and I thank God for you guys.
Councilwoman Wyatt?
Again, like everyone else says, thank you, look forward to continued dialogue and action on our part to take care of this. I don't think I can say any more than what's been said. I do have a couple of city issues, Mr. Branco, to, I was addressed by a resident recently of things going on in town in the corners downtown, I think are very misunderstood. Would you give a brief explanation of how we can better explain, I, it's pedestrian safety, but...
Right.
How can we better explain that to people?
Yeah, I mean, each intersection is a little bit different, it all is based on a pedestrian safety study that the city performed, it's over a year ago, that was really the basis then for securing safety funds from ODOT, so the project is funded through ODOT Safety Funds. Each intersection is kind of being tackled in a different way. Main Street, for example, folks have noticed, there's, when you're trying, standing there trying to cross in the crosswalk, at times trucks turning actually get up on the curb, so we're improving the curb radius there to ensure that trucks aren't actually getting up into the sidewalk when they're making turns. More work that'll happen at that location is protected left turns as well. Pedestrian signals are going to be re-timed to give pedestrians more time to begin in the crosswalk before, you know, some of those turning movements can actually take place. There is a few locations down on South, and Broadway is an example, where more of a bump out is being constructed to reduce the travel length across Broadway to make it safer for pedestrians, so it really is, there's some lighting enhancements that were part of it as well, so it's really a mixture of different improvements, all geared towards improving pedestrian safety. We have had pedestrians hit downtown crossing the street, that's one of the reasons why ODOT is funding this project.
Thank you, I just didn't quite know how to explain it to a couple people that I thought I had a grasp on it. And then Monroe Road, do we have any day, I, I, I'm going to tell you, last week, they were there one day, and there was no rain.
Yeah, I know, I went out there, was it yesterday, it looks like they're almost ready to pour curb, so it looks to me like they're just about ready to pour curb.
They were working yesterday pretty hard, but I, I, it's like, where are they?
Sometimes, sometimes what happens is just coordination with their subcontractors, so they've, I'm sure subcontracted out the concrete work, so just kind of getting that timing in place, but once the curb starts, you know, that side of the road is just going to be a, a complete mill, and we'll be, the asphalt, and then we'll pave, so it should go pretty quick.
It's not MillCon dragging their feet, it's probably, they continue to be great people.
Yeah.
Working with, thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Schaefer, anything to say?
I've got a few things. The resident at 459 South Broadway, or 495, it's, it's the very, it's just, I think it's the house before you go into McBurney, traveling south, or some sewer work done, and easement, that was, you're familiar with that project?
Yes.
Okay. There, there's a, a couple of things that that resident still hasn't had addressed from the city, and I, I just want to know if we can reach out to him with an update on, there was a, a letter that he requested on why that project needed to be take, why it needed to take place, why that easement needed to be on his property instead of kind of split between he and his neighbor. And then, the second part to what, what he's kind of wanting to know is if the concrete plug that was put in place to kind of close off the sewer, the old sewer main, if that will hold up for the long term, because that easement is, is no longer, it's, the responsibility is now on him, because he owns that again, and, you know, he doesn't want something to happen in 20 years, the ground cave-in because of, you know, faulty or whatever, so he, he's, he's concerned about that, and I'd just like to see if we could follow up with him.
Yeah, I know our engineering department's been in communication with him, I can, I'll get with them and see, see where that, the, the whole, you know, the whole reason that the new sewer line had to be installed is the existing sewer line actually ran under his house, so obviously...
Yeah, yeah, two.
So that was, uh, something that obviously we wanted to fix long-term when we did South Broadway Avenue.
So, the second part, the, the second thing I had to say was the concrete island in between the Monroe Road, but the two sides, it kind of sticks out into Columbus Avenue a little bit, did we?
Yeah, our engineering department checked that, it's in the exact same location it was.
It is?
Yeah, we verified that.
That's because it looks new, it looks a little different.
Bigger.
It's not.
So, is it possible to evaluate the striping, once that does happen?
Yeah, that's part of the project, is, I mean, we'll go in and we'll be striping all of Monroe Road, and I think that the lane kind of shifts there, and it did before, so I think it's just a perception, that will be addressed when, when striping is done.
All right. Also, I just wanted to thank everyone who is, was here to speak again, and Ben, I know you continue to show up, you, you want a resolution, you deserve that. I've, I've been on board since it was first brought up that we needed that. I, I have biracial cousins, I didn't even think about this before, but my, two of my brothers married non-white, and we, we just, we, we have a lot of diversity in our own family, and it's, it's the right way to go in denouncing racism, it's, it's not home here, and you guys are all welcome here, and Ben, I hope you do stay, I hope I can catch up with you sometime outside of council, don't feel bad, I'm, I'm super busy, I have six kids and run a lawn and landscape business, and just takes a lot of my time. But I think it looks bad for the city for us to not, PR standpoint, for, for us to not pass this resolution quicker, I think if we drag it out longer, that, you know, it's just going to add to the frustration, and I'm hoping that next week we can get this passed. That's, that's all I got.
Okay.
Thanks.
So just to let everyone know, next, to, this coming Tuesday at 6:00, we'll meet up here, encourage everybody to be here, to be a part of it, you may speak again, look forward, you have, you can, what's the best way for someone to get, we read it, but people probably need to maybe have a, a hard copy, data, a hard copy, or if you, is there a way if somebody were to...
We've got a handful of copies here that folks are starting to want.
For people to take, if you wouldn't mind.
Could it also be uploaded as the agenda on the, on the calendar? Because you can reach on the website, see the upcoming agendas, and just put it as an attachment agenda.
Yeah, it'll be, yes, yeah, we could do that.
And then that people can really kind of take a look at it and read it again, and then, again, come back to the meeting and be a part of the discussion, and we will be, we will be voting, we'll be voting on Tuesday. So I will entertain a motion to close our meeting.
As far as resolution is concerned, how many people of color were consulted to help you guys write that? Rather from a, a large organization like the NAACP or the MLB publication, or just non-white individuals, period? Do we know?
Our city attorney drafted it based on all the discussion and conversation we had at our work session.
So none?
That's, that's a kind of mischaracterization, not, not additional to what has been said, what my understanding was said here, the feedback that we got from the community, and the feedback that we got from council, so, did we contact the NAACP at night, to the extent that folks who spoke at council are in NAACP or active there, I mean, I, I don't really know.
I just thought, like, you didn't sit down with, like, let's say, a black attorney from Cincinnati or someone else, probably right back, or an Asian woman, or Puerto Rican, Latinx, any kind of other folks, would this would be more effective, like, in terms of...
Look, I mean, if, if you have suggestions, me, through, through your, through your representative, if you have a First Amendment right to petition your government for dress improvement, if you would like to speak to council members, and I think you have had conversations with some of the council members, you can certainly give them feedback on this resolution, this is a draft, okay? So, it's out there, if you know somebody who, an African-American attorney, or somebody from NAACP, or somebody from any other corporation, feel free to make recommendations to your council people. I sort of work for them, so I draft what they ask me to draft, and it is a draft, it's my understanding that they asked for, so, if that's incorrect, it's, it's not a sentence. So, it's not necessarily the only thing that's going to happen, it was something that I, I think some people here asked for pretty clearly, and said, what's the big deal, is we at least want you to pass a resolution, didn't have some racism, so, that's this, does that mean that that's the end-all, be-all of things that we currently do or will do in the future? No.
So, did I get a motion? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, please call the roll.
Mayor Burr?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Schoep?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you for joining our meeting Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. As a reminder, meeting Tuesday at 6:00 during these chambers, thank you, have a good evening.